Okay, we are recording.
Okay, great. Um, let's see, December 17th, compliance of executive order 7B, section one, publicly view this meeting in real time by clicking the Zoom meeting notation below. Anyway, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Chan, if I can call on you, I'd like you to approve the minutes of December 3rd, the regular selectmen's meeting. And if there's any questions, we can certainly discuss them.
No, I read it through completely. Looks like the minutes were just fine. So I'll make a motion to accept the December 3rd, 2020 regular selectmen's minutes, uh, meeting minutes as presented.
All right. Thank you. And I second that. Uh, number two, consider the reappointment of Stan Swanson as a full member of the Historic District Commission for the term January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2025. I'm moved. Okay. And again, I'll second that. Stan, if you're with us, welcome back. And we'd like to thank you for your consideration. Um, consider the reappointment of Paul Miller as an alternate member of the Agriculture Commission for the term January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2022.
Again, so moved.
Okay. And again, I second it. Um, I would like to review the, uh, regular Board of Selectmen meeting dates for 2021. Uh, I will note, given the pandemic and the issues we've had, uh, it will continue to be 4:00 PM. Uh, I know previously there were 7:00 PM and one was at 4:00, uh, and this was to be convenient to the public that might attend. Uh, these will all be 4:00 PM, uh, unless things change, and I don't expect them to next year. Uh, the meeting dates at 4:00 PM will be the first Thursday and the third Thursday. Uh, the dates will be January 7th, January 21st, February 4th, February 18th, March 4th, March 18th, April 1st, April 15th, May 6th, May 20th, June 3rd, June 13th, July 1st, July 15th, August 5th, August 19th, uh, September 2nd, September 16th, October 7th, October 21st, November 4th, November 18th, December 2nd, December 16th, and for 2022, it'll be January 6th and January 20th.
My only question, Jay, is, uh, if the, if things get lifted, uh, as far as the pandemic goes, and we're allowed to go back to live meetings, are we going to change that third Thursday back to 7:30? Or do you want to just, would it, at that point, would it become a special meeting and be a hassle?
No, I think what we could do is if things change, and again, um, I don't believe they're going to, just given, uh, what's going on. I think that's something we could decide, and we could change it, uh, at, at a regular meeting and say that we're going to be changing the meeting, uh, times to 7:00 PM. Um, I believe originally way back, it was 7:00 PM, and the reason it was moved to 4:00 PM was to give, uh, a variety of people, citizens of Woodstock, an opportunity to attend meetings. So I, I think for now, we'll go to the fore because of pandemic, and if situation changes, we can certainly revisit it next year.
Okay. If that's the case, then I'll make a motion to adopt the, uh, selectmen's, uh, meeting schedule as presented in agenda.
Okay. And I will second that. Thank you. Um, I'm sorry. Next, we have to open bids received for the Public Works, uh, Department auction items. And I have the sealed bids right here. Of course, you can't see me, but trust me, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm unsealing them. And I may have mentioned, we only have two. Okay. December 14th, 2020, to whom it may concern, this is regarding the used Sterling dump truck. Please accept my bid of 1801, $1,801 for the used 2003 Sterling L-7500 dump truck as listed in the Shopper's Guide. This bid is contingent on the town of Woodstock producing proper paperwork to allow me to register said vehicle in the state of Connecticut. Uh, they need title or certificate of origin. Um, I can be reached at, and they left the number. Anything concerning bid. Uh, thank you. Chandler Paquette, uh, with his home address. Given, uh, that, well, Chan, you, you're going to have to recuse yourself, but I will accept this bid on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. Um, the second bid, uh, to whom it may concern, a 1968 18-foot equipment trailer. Please accept my bid of $251 for the used 1968 18-foot equipment trailer as listed in the Shopper's Guide. The bid is contingent on the town of Woodstock producing proper paperwork to allow me to register said trailer in the state of Connecticut. Title and certificate of origin. Uh, I can be reached at, there's a whole number here. Uh, thank you. Uh, and signed Chandler Paquette. Um, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, since, uh, uh, Chan, you're recused, I will accept these two bids. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to read this, uh, because I must. Um, under Executive Order 7S7 and 7CC point 1, to discuss and vote upon a resolution appropriating an amount of money not to exceed $65,000 from the Woodstock Agricultural Land Preservation and Land Acquisition Fund towards the purchase and associated costs of development rights to approximately 140-acre parcel of land in the town of Woodstock, Connecticut, currently owned by Timothy D. Young, Wendy E. Young, Lucas T. Young, and Angela M. Young, located on the general northeastly side of Norwich-Winston Turnpike, which is Connecticut Route 169, known as Maple Crest Farm. It is the town's contribution towards the purchase of development rights and to said parcel. The town's contribution towards the purchase shall be in addition to funding for the purchase to be supplied by the State of Connecticut Department of Agriculture. As required by the above referenced executive orders, the Board of Finance approved this appropriation in expenditure at its September 8th, 2020 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the resolution as read.
I shall second that. Motion is passed. Thank you. Under Executive Order 7JJ point 4, under the authority of General Statute Section 12 dash 81 GG, to discuss and vote upon adopting the following ordinance regarding horse and pony property tax exemption. Um, this is an ordinance pursuant to the authority of General Statutes, uh, 12 doors dash 81 GG and notwithstanding the provisions of subdivision 68 of section 12 dash 81 of the General Statutes and, and section 12 dash 91 of the General Statute, we don't want to forget that, the town of Woodstock hereby provides that horses and ponies of any value stabled in the town of Woodstock shall be exempt from property taxation. The purpose of the ordinance is to promote agricultural use of land and other resources, in particular, the stabling, training, instructing, and riding of horses and ponies. This ordinance shall be effective with the grant list dated October 1st, 2020, and shall be applicable to assessment years commencing on and after said date. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll mo- make a motion to approve the resolution as read by the first selectman.
I will second it and thank you. Motion is passed. Ordinance is passed. A little background for those that may be listening in, uh, this has been going on for a number of years. The history is that horses at one time were used for aid transportation and also work on farms to, um, uh, for income for farmers. And in many towns, they have been, become exempt because we started taxing motor vehicles, which is the most, you know, this is the mode of transportation. And the horses and ponies, people have been taxed forever. So this is a good thing to do for those families and individuals that own horses in town. And for any of those young ladies that are waiting for standard to bring them a pony, this will make their parents a lot happier. Okay. Thank you. Uh, number nine, we have tax rebates. I'm reading. I haven't gone to sleep. I'm reading. Uh, tax rebates to the Woodstock Academy in the amounts of $78.89, $220.50, $201.64, $41.65, $238.39. Um, and I'm also going to add into this, uh, tax rebate also to Financial Service Vehicle Trust in the amount of $544.15. Could I have a motion to approve these, uh, tax rebates, please?
Make a motion to approve the tax rebates as listed in the agenda and read by the first selectman.
Thank you. And I second, uh, these rebates are approved. Um, let's see, correspondence and announcements. Because our good friend, Dr. Jeff Gordon chose to write a letter, and rather than just reading his correspondence, I have to read the letter into the record. Um, uh, December 15th, um, this is from Dr. Jeff Gordon, MD, resident of Woodstock. He said, uh, Dear First Selectmen Swan, Selectmen Paquette, and Selectmen Klein, I hope my letter finds you and finds you doing well. My letter to you is regarding the proposal by the Woodstock Open Space Land Acquisition and Farmland Preservation Commission to spend up to $65,000 towards the purchase of development rights for Maple Crest Farm. I support the appropriation of this money for this purpose. I ask that you vote to support this project. Maple Crest Farm is approximately 140 acres of prime farmland. The purchase of development rights is important, so as to maintain the agricultural use of the land and the rural character of the town. The Woodstock Planning and Zoning Commission's plan of open space and conservation supports maintaining the agricultural use of land being used for agriculture. In fact, the Woodstock Planning and Zoning Commission at a prior meeting supported this project and has supported consistently and continuously similar projects over the years. The expenditure of up to $65,000 does not add to the town's budget and will not increase the town's tax rate. The money is to be used by the town, resides already in the budget for such purpose. I thank the members of the Woodstock's Open Space Land Acquisition and Farmland Preservation Commission for the good work that they are doing for our community. I understand the Board of Selectmen has decided to use the governor's executive orders to for, uh, forego a town meeting and instead to decide upon this matter because of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. I thank the Board of Selectmen for being mindful of the public and town staff's safety during these times. I encourage the Board of Selectmen to look at what other towns are doing regarding all the town meetings, so as to keep the people of the towns directly involved as much as possible in the decision making of items that would otherwise be brought to a town meeting for decision. My best regards, Jeff Gordon. Uh, second letter from Dr. Gordon. Um, Dear First Selectmen Swan, uh, Selectmen Paquette, Selectmen Klein. Um, my letter to you is regarding proposed horse and pony property tax exemption ordinance. I support this ordinance. I ask you vote to enact this ordinance, which we just did. Uh, taxation of people who own horses or ponies in town raises minimal revenue at most, yet it takes money away from hardworking people. Furthermore, the taxation of people who own horses and ponies is counter to the past and ongoing efforts of the town and of the townspeople to support local agriculture. I understand the Board of Selectmen has decided to use the governor's executive orders to forego a town meeting, and he continues with what I previously read. He's happy that we're doing what we're doing and the way we're doing it, so as not to expose people to excessive danger by a town meeting. Uh, my best regards, uh, Jeff Gordon. Um, I also have in December 2nd, uh, Lieutenant Chris Charlin, Troop D. Uh, this is the monthly report on, um, issues or, or responses by troopers from Troop D to, uh, calls in the town of Woodstock. We had six accidents, 10 investigations, zero burglaries, one larceny, and 84 non-reportable events. Uh, there were zero DUIs, zero traffic citations, and one written warning. I also have a letter from Teague, um, to the residents down in Woodstock, uh, from Ann Miller, Executive Director. She basically, uh, wants to thank us for, uh, the, our monthly contributions to their online pantry at the Teague Building, um, the, uh, partnership with local schools and community organizations, uh, in Ponford, Thompson, and Woodstock to ensure that children, uh, have enough, uh, weekend, uh, meals, uh, emergency food distribution, and holiday support, holiday meals for qualified, uh, seniors and families. They're very grateful to the residents of Woodstock. We're happy to assist our neighbors and know that our ability to do so is only because of the generosity of this community. Um, I have another letter from Teague, from Ann Miller. Um, basically, I think, I believe it's, uh, it's thanking, uh, residents and also, uh, for contributions to the Woodstock Fuel Fund for those that may need assistance, um, you know, for fuel. Uh, it just says, "Thank you, Jay, and all for your help to your neighbors." Uh, okay, item 10. We're, we're still in correspondence and announcements. Okay. Uh, this is from Lynn Weaver. Uh, "With regrets, I need to decline the reappointment to the Agricultural Commission. Uh, he and his wife are pel- planning on selling their Woodstock home and moving south to be close to the grandchildren in Virginia Beach, perhaps it's spring or summer." Um, "We will, um, accept this, I think, with regret." Uh, Lynn is a terrific person. He's done wonderful things with the, uh, celebrating agriculture, uh, very, very nice man, and we'll be sending him a thank you note for his, uh, past contributions. And I, you know, the other thing is, uh, Virginia Beach, I think that's baloney. He mentions grandchildren. You look at weather like today, I think he's looking at nice weather in the future. Um, okay. I have another, let me see. Okay. Um, this is from Jean McClellan, and it's a letter of resignation. Uh, she's going to step down from, uh, oh, God, let me see. Uh, Historic Properties Commission. Um, she's been on it for many years, but just feels that this time, it's time for her to, um, to step down. Um, I have a letter from Stephanie Anthony. Um, she, um, it says, it was addressed to me, it says, "Unfortunately, I have moved out of Woodstock recently and can no longer serve on the Economic Development Commission. Please accept this email as my resignation. Kind regards." And, um, we don't have to, uh, Chan, we don't have to accept these. I, I think we just acknowledge that these people have chosen. We can't reject their resignation. But I just want you to know that we'll, we will be sending them a letter of thanks for, uh, their past contributions.
Appreciate it.
Um, let's see, we have another resignation. Um, okay, this is from John Battolomani, uh, and he just said, "I will not be able to continue to serve as the alternate on the Woodstock Historic Properties Commission." Must be the weather. We got a lot of resignations. Um, this is from Stuart Peaslee, um, and he feels that it would not be appropriate to continue inland wetlands and watercourses agency. Uh, his term will be up on December 31st, um, and he just, he called to, to offer his resignation. Okay. Oh, again, kind of a personal note from Stuart Peaslee. "It's been a privilege to serve on this commission. At the moment, I have many professional, uh, demands from my practice somewhere out of the area. I expect to be traveling for these endeavors. I respectfully herewith submit my resignation." Um, okay. Uh, the last one I have, um, is a letter from Marion Halliwell, and she, um, just wants to know, "Regretfully, uh, she wishes to resign from the Beautification Committee after serving for about 10 years. It's time to let another Woods, resident of Woodstock, uh, take my place. I enjoyed learning more about the town at our meetings and working with other members." Um, let us see, I gotta get back to the agenda. Okay. Um. Okay. One of the, uh, one of the things that we were talking, uh, Chan, previously, and we're talking about the 7:00 PM and the 4:00 PM, uh, will we make change in next year? Um, one of the reasons apparently that the, one of the Board of Selectmen's meetings went to 4:00 PM was due to the 7:30 PM Planning and Zoting, uh, Commission time, is if you remember way back before COVID, when we were doing live meetings, uh, many times Dr. Gordon would attend our meeting, and many times after our meeting, we would attend his meeting. So I think that was one of the reasons that the third Thursday, the time went to 4 o'clock was to accommodate planning and zoning. Um. Okay. All right, uh, folks, I, you know, in, in this agenda at this point, um, we are open for public comments. If anybody has any comments? Yes, Dawn?
Um, I, I just want to thank you all for the efforts that the Board of Selectmen have continuously done throughout this year to make sure this vote finally happened before the end of 2020. So thank you.
Dawn, you're welcome. And I, I thank you, your dedication to this endeavor, because you and I have talked many times about this, and, and I know that the clock was ticking, uh, on this resolution. And, and that's one of the, seriously, that's one of the reasons we're having this Zoom meeting today, because, you know, we have all this snow, but this was very, very important, as was the, uh, this was, uh, our assessor, Emily, the, the whole thing about the, uh, horses and ponies. And so thank you for your dedication and your efforts on the area of agriculture.
And I'd like to extend your thank you to the rest of the committee, many of whom are also on this call, listening in. Um, Chan Paquette, of course, Charlene Cutler, Roger Gale, who's been with the committee right from the start, George French, and Crystal Adams. So thank you to the whole committee, because I get to be up front all the time, but it's really everybody doing a lot of work.
I understand. And thank you to you all for your dedication. Um, do we have any other, uh, public comments? Okay. Uh, one of the things I'd like to ask, I believe Winnie is with us, and I'm not sure who it is, but, um, do you have any questions, uh, specific to what you've heard or what's going on or whatever? Um, W-I-N-Y? No? You know, they probably went to a Zoom meeting, and then somebody walked out of their room and went down the street to get coffee, but it shows up as Winnie radio. Well, that's all well and good. Hey, listen, you're all witnesses. They had your chance. I don't expect any phone calls later about clarification. All right. Dr. Greg, how are you, my friend?
Hi. I'm sorry to be late. I was stuck in, stuck in the snowbank out there.
I, no, I believe it. Um, I, I'm at the point, the, uh, the, the Greg Klein point, it says, "Other from committee." Do you have any comments? And I, I understand you have the agenda, but do you have any comments, concerns, or questions about anything that was on the agenda?
No, I'm good. I'm good. Good on all of that. I'm fine. Thank you.
Goodness.
That's a first, huh?
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm shocked, shocked. I can't, goodness, I gotta write this date down. This will go down in, in, as a day or whatever. Anyway, okay. Thanks, Greg.
Sorry to be late to the meeting and, and it just might.
No, it's okay.
Stupid fault. But anyway, I was outside and time got away, so.
What happened? And Greg, I just wanted to note it for the record, you were not outside at my driveway. I looked a number of times. I never saw you. It had to be done on its own. So thanks for nothing.
If I, if I could have gotten out of my driveway, then I could have gone to your driveway, right?
Okay.
All right.
All right. Um, okay, any other from public or, and Rich Roberts, I want to thank you for joining us. Nice to see you. Um, Town Attorney. Um, but are there any comments from anybody, public or, or Board of Selectmen?
I just want to throw out one public safety issue that has come to my attention. I, I know it's always been a bit of a problem, but in driving around at night, looking at the, um, light displays so that we can judge them for the contest, there's still a great number of houses in this town that do not have reflective numbers on the end of their driveway or on their mailbox. If I was a ambulance driver trying to find somebody who was in dire straits, I'd be pulling my hair out of my head, because you might go 10 houses with no numbers out there. And if somebody calls 911 for a state cop, it might And if somebody calls nine-one-one for a state cop, it might take them an extra three, four minutes to find you because you don't have your numbers out there. I don't know if there's maybe a little something we could put up on the website or just some way to remind people that it, even if it's, your house should be marked for your safety, but it also gives a reference to your two neighbors that don't have a green or a reflective sticker, so, um, I just would like to urge everybody to try and, try and get those numbers out there. It's really important, and it's in those situations where minutes count, um, that it really comes into play.
We encountered a very similar situation to that last night. The number, I, I don't know what, what the issue is on one ninety-seven, but turn, turn, going from the light in North Woodstock going east on one ninety-seven, it seemed like the numbers were at one, one section, and all of a sudden, they were different, and then all of a sudden, they were, they were different yet again. Um, you know, they're in, in the hundreds, and the, then the three hundreds, and the two hundreds, and stuff like that. I don't, I don't know if, if it's just what we saw and didn't see, but it seemed to me something was amiss in the way the housing lots were numbered. Uh, that probably the, needs to be checked by the building inspector or whoever's in charge of that. And you're absolutely right, that, the, the, the people don't have the reflective numbers, you know, and, or they covered up the number on the mailbox with a, with a holiday decoration. That doesn't help. And, you know, at one point, I was thinking, maybe, maybe people participate in this. The important thing is for emergencies, you're, that, you know, your point, that's exactly right. But also, if they want to participate in this thing, in this contest in the future, they, they should be required to have that sign, or, or we should make some kind of signs for this, say, "Participant in the contest," and the, but, you know, the ground might be frozen, and you couldn't stick it in anyway. So, I just think you should require that they have a green reflective sign in order to register.
You're, you're both absolutely right. Getting back to the safety thing, um, having been involved with the fire department in the past, this is something they've been pressing forever. Uh, it is something that's required, um, and I will talk to Crystal, and I think it's something that we'll try to put on the website or Facebook page to encourage. But, you know, you know, it's your whole story, you, you, it, it's very apparent to the three of us traveling around, looking at the decorated houses, where on site, you know, I had an extra flashlight, spotlight, to hit the houses or to hit the mailboxes, because I weren't, a lot of them weren't labeled. And again, when you call nine-one-one, and I've heard this complaint from both firefighters and EMS staff, they can't find the house. Well, there's a delay, and, and as we both know, all three of us know, uh, you know, a delay could be life threatening. So, I think we'll try to advertise that. Um, I know in the past, the stations have offered free numbers to homeowners, but again, you know, it's one of these things that, um, people should do it, but they don't, and it's not like it's enforceable, but it's just people aren't thinking of their own safety. You know, it's sort of like they don't lock their cars, and when their car is stolen, they complain, "Somebody stole my car. Was it locked?" Well, well, no. So, I mean, you know, it's, I, I understand what you both mean, and I think we can probably advertise better, uh, uh, to remind people on the town, uh, website and on the town Facebook page. But you're both right, and I think all three of us, because of our recent travels this week, noticed that.
Thank you.
Um, would you, would you like, would you like, uh, that, that, that issue to be brought up at the next meeting of the fire department, which, the, the volunteer fire department, um, which is next, which is first, first Thursday, first Monday in, in January?
Well, you know what, Greg? I, I can send an email to all three chiefs, just saying that it's become very apparent to us, but, you know, it's, it's not their issue, because those, uh, uh, men and women that, that serve in the fire service in the three departments, they know about it. And I'm sure that, you know, I, I've talked to people in the past, they're very concerned about it, as is the folks that, that man our, uh, Emergency Medical Service. So, certainly bring it up, but I think it's, you know, it's a creature of the choir. And I think, you know, if we can try to do more, uh, P R. on, on our website and on our, our Facebook page, just as a general reminder, um, and I kind of, you know, I feel bad, but I don't have a lot of sympathy, you know what I mean? If there's a delay, it's unfortunate, but they're not helping either. So.
Right. That's right.
Okay, any other comments from the public or, uh, uh, the selectmen?
I'd, I'd just like to add one thing. The Open Space Committee, uh, got another notch in their belt tonight, uh, by getting another piece of Woodstock put aside. It's a good group of people, they work hard, and they really care about this town. Um, but I do want to kind of back up what Jay was saying, and that's, Dawn, you put in countless hours compared to what the commission does. You meet with the state, you deal with the paperwork, you deal with Hartford, you do the onsite walks, I mean, it, the hours that you put in is beyond commendable, and I just wanted to say personally, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Chan. Thank you.
And, you know, you know, I, I echo you, Chan, um, because, Dawn, people on the committees, and I say this to folks in town, anybody that serves on a committee, a commission, or whatever, and they're doing it out of the goodness of their heart, because they care about this town, and they're trying to do positive things for this town, and the amount of time that, that, that they commit, uh, to try to make things better for other people, is, it's really commendable, and I'm, I'm so appreciative, uh, as a resident, you know? But in, in, anytime I get an opportunity, I tell people, you know, "Thank you so much." So, again, just to echo you, Chan, you're absolutely right.
Yep, I agree.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. I'm all embarrassed now. Thank you.
Good, good. Okay, if, if, uh, if there be nothing else to come before us to discuss, um, I, I, uh, I thank you all for attending. Um, I appreciate your commitment to the town, um, and stay warm and bring in some more wood, because it's gonna be very cold tonight. All right, take care and thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Right. Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Yep. Happy holiday.
Oh, happy, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody, yes.
All right. Thank you.